Let's call our regular board meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We can have a roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demakia? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Demakia sends his regrets. He is ill today, and we will carry on. So at this time, we would have recognition of visitors, which we don't really have any special visitors, but we would also extend an opportunity for the public to speak at this time. Our first hearing of the public.
I really have an announcement. NASA is offering internships for college students. And my understanding, if you're taking a class, you're also eligible for this internship. It's a paid internship. And, you know, it's kind of sketchy information. We have the name of the person that works at the facility who had let us know what's going on. But also, unfortunately, their deadline is October the 25th, which is next week. So I don't know if any of you know someone that's attending college.
So it's for presently enrolled college students, which would mean they're probably at a local college if they're commuting, because is it for the summer? When does the internship start?
It's the summer.
Okay, summer internship?
Yeah, so know somebody.
Yes.
They need a job during the summer, but...
Before we leave, can I get the information from you, who the contact is?
Sure.
And then, I don't know, Josh, if you guys take the information back to the administration, and they can then share it with...
LCC or what?
Yeah. With LCC, I think, or the Mandehaniers, there's a connection there.
Yes.
So they would be aware of that. Now, is it also eligible for our students who are taking, you might not know, early college classes?
We were talking about that. What is...
Because technically, they are LCC college students with college ID numbers?
I always think so.
They are. The only thing I would consider is if they're doing an internship as the work permit aspect of it, I don't know how NASA would view it, because, I mean, at that point, it's probably more of, it's at their discretion as whether or not they want somebody under 18.
I'd like to add this. I am sorry for putting her on the spot, but it happened that at church Sunday, it was announcement at our church, Friendship Baptist, and Reverend Jackson is in charge of our church, and he permitted Mr. Orlando Thompson to get up and say this. And that's all the information we received, that on October the 25th, it is a paid intern for NASA. And if you are a college student, you are eligible for it. They will help you fill out the form, and they have 200 to 300 students that they will take in every year. And it is paid. We don't know the amount. We didn't get that. But the telephone number is on the form that I gave Linda, and that is the information we received at the time. All you have to be is a college student, and that was the limited information that we received. I gave the information to Mr. Jama already earlier today, so that he could find out if our students that are graduating from col-- they'll graduate from college, really, with a what? A high-- whether they're a high school diploma and what, a college degree.
If they're a associate, then we'll have X number of hours.
Yeah, and so I don't know if they could fit that in then as a paid intern, and if they will be moving off campus. That's something that we have to find out.
Timing-wise, that probably makes sense, yeah. Timing-wise, because the majority of the seniors have turned 18 then, and then as if it's in the summer.
Yes. I definitely wanted to get that in, so I popped that on Linda when she came in. I said, "Would you please announce this to just get it in?" Because that's important information, and they do that every year, and we're just finding out about that.
So we have numbers here if you guys want the numbers.
All I want to say is, with people who do the speaking, I don't know about the rest of the people, but I can't hear what the question is or the statement from the speaker from here. So I don't know whether the microphone is working that we can hear back there. Do you all hear when the people just talk to the mic? Yeah? Oh, then I guess I got a problem.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion to amend or approve the sign minutes from our October 1st meeting.
So much support.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Is there any old business for discussion?
The only old business, Josh and I were talking, so I was just thinking that maybe somewhere, someone has a list of students that have withdrawn, and students, you probably have a list of students who have, you know, from, I mean, and the date would be 7:15 to 11:15. If you found a list like that, that would probably give us, you know, give us some idea of...
For the record, Bill, could you explain what you're talking about?
We were talking about student enrollment, how many, how many students we actually had in the district.
Can you hear?
Okay.
Okay.
Move the mic closer, maybe.
We were talking about how many students we actually had in the district, okay? And I'm sitting here thinking, there has to be somebody, because if, somebody has to be in charge of enrollment and, you know, and withdrawals. So, I mean, if you found a list, whoever had that, and I'm sure there's somebody who does have it.
I don't know if there's a formal list, but I can have Don Dresky in EMIS run a report more than likely of who's ever withdrawn since the beginning of the calendar, or beginning of the fiscal year.
Yeah, and that would give us, give us a better, like I said, I think the numbers are somewhat skewed at this point, and I know it could eventually come down to just asking the state, you know, because I know you have to certify...
Well, the state will naturally catch up, just based on what's put in within EMIS, and the checks and balance of that, like we discussed earlier. Eventually, some school will claim somebody who we show as actively enrolled if we're still showing that student, if, you know, we're not doing our end of it, and then it'll become a discussion of where that student really is. So naturally, there's a checks and balance of that end of it, if the student's showing as enrolled somewhere else.
I also have one other question. We, I mean, we're like 16 months into this academic distress thing, and has there been any evaluations done on anybody since, I mean, did you get an evaluation this year?
At the end of last year, I did, yes. The normal timing, whereas you guys did me, did the evaluation the year prior, yeah, I did get evaluation. I don't know, I would assume so, being that we got forms stating that they were evaluated based on the point system, and that's what determines whether or not the person gets the percent increase for the next year.
So who actually did your evaluation?
Mr. Hardy.
Okay.
So last June, or so you were evaluated?
I believe it was in May, yeah.
Okay, you wouldn't know if anyone else was?
Well, I would have to. I have a list showing whoever got their percent increase based on their evaluation in the point system.
Oh, for your office personnel?
Well, my office, I can vouch for, but the, yeah, the entire district in regards to, well, not entire district, everybody who is, like, non-rep personnel who would get, who are entitled to that percent increase based on their evaluation points.
Yeah, I remember.
So whatever came through based on those would, I would have that list, because otherwise, I couldn't give them the percent increases, so, because that's solely based on their points per the evaluation.
Okay, I guess, and I know we took a little flack for evaluations, but I also wanted to know if Mr. Hardy got evaluated?
That I don't know.
If he did, who did it?
I would assume that the ADC would be the one that does that, but honestly, that's not within my, my knowledge.
So that's who I should ask?
I would say, yeah, ADC or Mr. Hardy, and that's...
I mean, I was just wondering about, you know, I know there's an evaluation system and...
I would assume so. I mean, but again, I don't want to, I don't know for certain, so I don't want to state otherwise, but I would assume so based on some of the state reporting, I think.
And there was a lot going on. I mean, I'm just wondering, did the teachers get evaluated last year?
That I don't know for sure either. I would assume so, again, but...
Ask the teachers?
Yes.
I want to go back to your first question, though, Bill, because at the last meeting, you asked about the numbers in EMIS, and Josh said he would get you some numbers, and he did send us an email right after that. So were those numbers not what you were looking for? Were they inaccurate?
I would say those were the numbers from maybe the year before, and do I think they're accurate? In my opinion, no, but even Josh will say they're probably not accurate.
Okay. That was my hesitance on sending them over before, because I knew they were still looking at the numbers.
And I just wanted to clear for the record that you did do what you said you would do.
Absolutely.
When you forward that information to us, but if it's not the right information...
And I also, for comparison, I sent you the two years prior, the final attendance.
Yeah, because if you remember, when we opened up in 2016, we were told that, and I think Mr. Hawke said that he had to buy extra lockers, that we had 2258 in this school, which, you know, when you give me a number like that, and you say you have to order lockers, I'm assuming that's how many you need, okay? But I really don't think there's 2258 here, anything close to that now.
And I think some of the things that changed, though, because we had pulled out of early college at that time, some of those students did go back, they started filtering them back into early college.
Well, you have to include those numbers.
Okay.
But, I mean, there's other things to look into that, too. I mean, as I talked to Josh, Spectrum, which is basically a charter school downtown.
Sure.
Okay, that's flowed through for us, so they are counted as on our rolls, and like Josh says, he, you don't know what's there and what isn't there neatly, if you don't get that, if you don't get that information. So it could be, it could be somewhat skewed, but, I mean, the numbers that I'm talking about, I mean, I expect, I expect to see some change here.
Okay.
I mean, in the District Y, not just at the high school, but District Y.
There was a concern about the safety of the students, and it's been ongoing. There was supposedly a meeting with Sal Rivera and certain board members and some other members. Is there a summary of that meeting?
So at our last board meeting, we went to executive session, and I kind of gave you an update on the first meeting that we had.
Yes.
The second meeting that transpired, Mark Ballard and Bill Sturgill were there. No summaries of yet. I'm expecting there will be minutes sent out from the meeting of what's appropriate for discussion. I think part of our updates will come, like, in our next board meeting, probably in executive session. Why? Because the nature of some of the safety discussions aren't public conversations, because they, they're, part of it, I know, is discussing certain protocols in terms of emergency procedures.
I see.
And so those things, whether it's lockdown protocols or certain things, aren't for public disclosure, simply because people who are out there targeting us, we really don't want them to know what you do when this happens and that happens and that happens. I know there, the meeting, they had a second meeting. There was also a walkthrough that was done at the high school, in which both Mark and Bill were present. They could share with you anything that they think is reasonable to share, in terms of their observations or what transpired in that meeting, in terms of what the objectives are, the goals are.
No, that's fine, but there's going to be a continuously...
Every Friday.
Every Friday, 9 o'clock. Where?
We were meeting at City Hall.
At City Hall?
In the police department.
Yeah, in their conference, in their conference room.
So we're going to definitely make sure that we take care of this situation.
That's the intention.
Absolutely. So I just want to make sure that that is public knowledge.
Any other comments or questions regarding old business? Report recommendations to the treasurer?
Nothing at this time. We didn't send over, I don't think they've formally approved yet the month-end financials yet, but I think they're maybe on his agenda for next Monday. So as soon as they're formally approved, I'll send them out to you guys. And I did finish up the five-year forecast. It's not, Finn, it's not approved yet, so I should have that, if not the first meeting in acto, or November. I'll have it for the second meeting to give you guys an update.
So you'll put it up on the board and...
I'll walk through it with you guys, for sure. If you want it displayed, I can try and put something like that together. I'll try and pretty it up for you guys and put some graphs up there for you. Otherwise, I can just pass you out and walk you through step by step, if you want, but I'll get it to you ahead of time, too, so you can come with questions.
It's not, it's not just for us, it's for everybody to see. That's why they, you know, put it up on the screen.
Okay. Yeah, I can have it projected up there, at least have the forecast itself, so everybody can see it.
I can sit home and read it 12 times, but they, you know...
True. And it's always available for anyone else, obviously. I'll post it on my website, the school website on my page, as soon as it's formally approved.
And you all have computers, right?
Yes.
So it'll be on there.
Would you care to introduce our new staff person, since this is a treasurer stuff?
This is Eden. She is my new secretary for the treasurer's office.
Welcome.
She will be replacing Alicia. Alicia has moved on to a different position.
Welcome, welcome.
Good to see you.
Any new business?
Yes, I have some new business. I'm trying to change the narrative, and I'm glad our reporter is here. I don't know if some people know, that he not only tries to cover our meeting, but he has to go downtown, and that's why he leaves, and he is to cover the council meeting downtown. So he's doing a mammoth job. And I went to a meeting, I was invited by a mother that was very concerned about her student, and she wanted me to come and sit in on that meeting. So when I went last week, that meeting was canceled. So long as I was there, they had the meeting at 7:00 a.m. So I said, "Well, let me just stay here, since I'm up so early, and just walk around the school and find out what was going on." The first thing I found out, we have a personnel, and his name is Matthew Killian, and he's out there in the cafeteria. He's called the Student Academic Specialist. He was phenomenal, and I think sometimes when we see something like that, we need to say something about it. What happens when the students are a few minutes late, 10 minutes late, 15 minutes late, they have to come in and sit in that cafeteria area after everybody has finished eating, and at the end, sometimes the cafeteria ladies are still cleaning up, but they're coming at the part that's already finished. So you can see the transition going on right there. The kids come in, they sit at those tables that are already cleaned, and there's a paper that they take up. And the paper is wonderful. The paper says, "Are you having any difficulties at home that's making you tardy? If it is, can we be of any assistance to you?" That's given out daily, and they fill it out some of the time, because some of the kids say, "I have to get three brothers and sisters off to elementary school before I get myself off, and this is the reason that I'm late." Some say, "I have a mother and a father that are ill, and I change them that are actually in hospital beds before I do that, before I can get the aid that comes in," because they only come in at a certain time, and that's my daily life. Sometimes the kids won't fill it out at all, because they're embarrassed, and so, but this man, that is phenomenal, he walks around and he makes sure that those that want to study, they get a chance, and he makes sure that they're quiet. They're not just spinning their wheels, sitting there. So sometimes, can you imagine what's going to happen in the winter? He's going to wind up with, what, 50, 60, 70 kids, because if you're, what, three to five minutes late, that is where you're going to go. And then, can you imagine the boots, the coats, the scarves, the hats that you're going to put up with? And he's doing that by himself, and perhaps sometimes with the aide. That young man, someone needs to say something positive about what he's doing. Matthew Killian. I watched him do that, didn't say anything. Perhaps I was rude by coming into his space and didn't introduce myself. At the end, I did say, "God bless," and shook his hand and walked out of the room, told him who I was, and let it go. I didn't want him to think, and I get very upset about board members, when they see us, they think that we're antagonistic, that we're coming to spy, that we're not supportive of them, because that's not what we're doing. Then, as I was there, I thought, after talking to Mr. Jama, I said, "Why don't we change the narrative? Because we're doing more than having difficulty with safety." And he said, "Yes." I said, "What type of other students do we have?" He said, "Do you know we have a student here that is an A student, and she's female, and she's in welding class, and she's top of the line in welding?" And I said, "Could I have some student's name that are doing exceptional work, and can you do that for me?" And I have a list for our reporter, and it's just phenomenal. One teacher said, and I, this is what I really like, "Jacob Addis." And I said, "What about Jacob?" And he said, "Jacob," this is from his teacher, "is a polite young man. He sits in front of the classes. He attempts all assignments, even if he is unsure of the correct way to do it. He gets Cs and Bs, but he's always trying to get better. He shows respect to everyone and embodies the best of Lorraine High School." I'm not just talking about someone like Daniel Ortiz, or someone like Ariana Leandry, or someone like Marquines Graham, that, listen to this, 4.1, 3.6, 4.1. These are the people that are on track for associate degrees in May, that are trained to volunteer, International Festival, Food Pantry, part of the Young Scholar Program, baseball, soccer, bowling, National Honor Society, works, wants to attend college to major in emergency medical medicine. There are pages of this from the teacher. All the teachers did this, and I'm going to pass this along. What I ask, and perhaps we can do this with permission from the parents, that once a week, or maybe every other week, that we could feature one of these exceptional students and write something about them, change the narrative from Lorraine High School, and show these exceptional students that are doing something, and perhaps bring them and their parents here, and give them a, what, certificate? Have them come forth and just thank them for what they're doing for Lorraine High. This is what I'm saying about change the narrative, because we have some phenomenal, phenomenal students that love to come to school. Thank you.
Are there, at this time, are there any committee reports besides that, any other reports from the board? I think, Mark, were you? Did you have anything? I thought you motioned to...
No, I'm good.
No new business?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay, at this time, we have our second hearing of the public. If there's someone else who would like to address the board?
I have a question. Is the entire board invited to the meeting with Sal Rivera?
No.
Okay, who's invited?
I have been, so there are two board members, myself and Bill, were signed to it, and Mark has interacted for me when I was out of town.
And also for me. I called Mark also, because I was with him once, and if I'm not going to be there, I want somebody to be there.
And we can only have two board members?
Only two?
Yeah, because otherwise...
It's a meeting.
It's a quorum.
And maybe, it could, is it technically a quorum? We're not taking action, but it is board-related work, and so...
Discussing school business.
Yeah, and discussing official school business, so by law, we can only have, we can't have a majority at any, any of our, any committee meeting.
So the president is not in attendance?
No.
No?
No, we were, as we always are, very intentional in terms of selection, based on folks who'd worked with certain safety issues in the past, or worked with law enforcement on a regular basis. And so what will happen for us is, there will be, each of us at some stage will rotate in, just so we get kind of an earshot of what it is, but it's just like any other committee meeting. Two board members assigned, and we and the police chief discussed in the chair who those, those folks would be best suited for, and that's kind of how we went with that.
So if the CEO decides to invite more, or he wants less, what happens then?
So this isn't the CEO's meeting.
Mm-hmm.
That's the first thing. It's not the board's meeting. This is the police chief's meeting. The police chief acting as the lead on this particular piece, that's why the meetings are at the police station, in the police conference room. So the other individuals, as you know, who are there, there's representative from the prosecutor's office, because in dealing with any kind of juvenile issue, it's not a city municipality, it's a county, Court of Common Pleas Domestic Relations Court, so that goes into the, so there's a special actual juvenile prosecutor that would handle any cases that would go there. There is a member of city council who's present, the mayor, the safety service director, a commission member, board members, and am I missing?
I didn't meet the streets member.
Yeah, that's a mission.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and probably four police officers that are Dr. Dan Reinhardt.
Our resource officer is one, and then another officer who does all of the technology data component for the police department, and so, and also the lieutenant who supervises the...
And if the police chief decides he wants additional people there, he can do so.
At any time, there's, there's no, the number that was selected was very intentional by the chief, in terms of which pieces need to be represented based on this specific topic, and who are the folks who would be, bring the perspective necessary to facilitate this conversation. So the chief could ask other people to be there, but again, he was very specific and intentional in identifying what sectors should be represented.
But he could expand.
Sure. I mean, there's, this is...
Just wanted to know.
Yeah, this is not a, there is no law of restriction around this.
Thank you.
Is the CEO in attendance?
Yes, the CEO and Mr. Hawke. Any other questions? I guess our next board meeting is...
We have a second hearing of the public? Do we have a second?
We did that, yeah, I asked them.
I think there, I think there's a second hearing of the public.
Oh, yeah, I said second hearing of the public. That's when she asked her question.
She didn't hear you.
Come on up.
I am Barbie Washington. I live on River Side Drive. Bear with me. I was just taking notes as you guys were speaking, and I just wanted to ask some questions. Changing the narrative, I do think we need to get more of the positive things that are happening, but as a parent, I want to know the negatives as well. happening, but as a parent, I want to know the negatives as well. I feel if we, if they're swept under the rug, then we aren't able to address them. And then, I also feel that that's how the crazy stories, you know, start to get out. If something happens, the school doesn't address it, and then, next thing you know it, someone's at Apple's, talking about something crazy where it really, you know, never was that big of a deal. As far as the number of students, I guess I'm confused why we don't know that. I know that there was an article that we are going to be receiving some funds for safety and training, and then there was a specific number of $37,233.50, based on $5.65 per student, so that equals $6,590. So, I wasn't sure.
It's all about timing of when they get the attendance numbers. That number is probably whatever the current, the current number the state is showing for us. I think the discussion we're having is the fact of, and you guys can speak to it, and I can, that you're hearing that there's families that are leaving, or pulling their students out, and the numbers aren't aligning to what they're hearing. So, and again, it's, it's timing in regards to getting the counts right, and seeing who hasn't, and updating the EMIS system based on who has, like, who's been here. There's probably some students that maybe haven't shown up since the beginning of the year, that haven't formally come off our books yet, but the state wouldn't know that until that process through the system to get there. But being that that, the safety grant came through Mike DeWine's office, they're gonna pull whatever the current number is at the state level at that time. So that could, it varies based on timing.
Okay. I want to say that Mr. Killian is amazing. He does numerous things, from taking the kids on college trips, and he's coach for football and basketball, and I, I think he's amazing as well. I don't think we can address this here, but I would like to state that I am concerned about the new way of handling kids that are late to school. If you are five minutes late because you were having to take care of your family, you now miss a whole period. For some kids, that's a block class, and instead of missing five minutes, now you miss that whole day. And it could possibly be something that you didn't have control over. I also am concerned, they were hearing that the absenteeism rate, chronic absenteeism rate, was like 38-point-something percent, and now it's like 66-something percent. And I'm wondering, like, what are we doing to get the kids to school? I guess that's it. That's my main concern. Do we have any feedback on any of that?
Generally, we don't do certain feedback if it's specific to things we need to get, but I can, I think, part of our conversation that's been going on for the last number of weeks, a number of meetings, regarding attendance, or, excuse me, regarding how many students are enrolled in the district, for a number of reasons. One is, we know based on conditions in the district, that we are expecting and we are hearing of increased open enrollment. We also know that specifically around this issue of safety, we had received lots of calls from teachers, comments from students, from teachers, about, about enrollment numbers where people were actually leaving the district. And we've talked, we've heard from other school districts about kids coming into their district. And some of these are typical, but there was also an increase in the conversations, and there was real concern specifically around the safety piece. We expected enrollment to change, going against a trend that had been reestablished in terms of increased enrollment in the district. So, and then what happened is there were some numbers that were published, and the number that was published even changed. So, we had a couple of numbers published that were different, we had a couple of numbers reported to us that said one thing, and then we're hearing something else. So, we tried to get an objective number from the administration on what the actual enrollment is. Knowing that we have to report this to the state on somewhat of a regular basis, and we've always had to report enrollment. So it's not like this is a new thing of counting kids. And when we are this far into the school year, the expectation of knowing with some, what accuracy of what your enrollment numbers are, is not unrealistic. For a teacher to know that Johnny is on my roster, but I haven't seen him, and, you know, so purging this stuff, and so, so we're skeptical, because when you report a number that's inflated, that looks to be a positive thing, but then you don't report the number that's real. So that's, and so, the best thing, whether it's for us to continue to speculate, is let's ask direct questions, and even with that, we, as you can hear, we still haven't arrived at that number.
Yeah, and I, I heard what you heard, like, I heard that there was 800 new students, and then I heard at a town hall meeting that we were down a number of students, and there was even a statement made by Mr. Hardy, that he could even let some teachers go based on the numbers. So, I'm concerned, you know, as well.
In answer to you, in answer to your one question about arriving late, okay, I mean, there, if you come to school late, they don't want you interrupting the classroom, so they take, and they, they put you into this room until...
Is it called the holding tank or holding cell?
Yeah, basically, it's, it's, I don't wanna say holding cell, but, but it's a place to stay, so you don't, you're not walking around the halls, this and that, and, and I understand, and probably what most people do, once they, they wouldn't come, they'll wait till the second thing and come, you know, so they're just gonna go right in. They don't wanna interrupt the classroom, they're saying it's rude to the other students, you know? And, and you understand that, but if you're just a couple of minutes late, I mean, my thought is, you know, they need to be educated. I mean, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve of doing it this way, but it's not, it's not our show right now, you know? So, but that's, that's just the way it is, and they, they just don't want the interruption, constant interruptions. And as you, you can sit out in front of the school, and you can see a lot of kids coming in late, and you can pick your day.
Yeah.
And then, and I see parents dropping kids off. I sat here one day and watched that, and I'm wondering, why would, why wouldn't they drop them off on time, if they're gonna drop them off? Why not drop them off when they're supposed to be here? You know, but, you know, life, life, life doesn't resolve around, revolve around what I think, if it's what a parent thinks.
One last question, I'm sorry. If we can get together and work on safety, do we think that there's a way to get together and work on education? I know that, like, two-thirds of the, of the seniors may not graduate, 17% of the curriculum is aligned to the standards. We have to do both.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you this, and you, you're saying 17%, okay? I would really like to know where that number came from, and how it was derived at, because you can, you know, you could throw any number out to me, and, and he's gonna print it, and that doesn't make it a truth.
Well, I think the other piece is the, is you indicate, I think you said how many students were not on track to graduate?
Two-thirds.
Okay, so, some of this that was, that came out of a town hall meeting, that's important, and I spoke with some different folks about it, because I was trying to find clarity also, is some were misstatements. There's, there's on-track to graduate, there's end-of-year exams, they're very different things. And when you're looking at these different pieces, if you kind of get one a little bit mixed up, it can present a very different, so I don't know that the, that two-thirds of our seniors are not graduating.
So, do you feel comfortable with the 25%?
I don't feel comfortable with anything, because I just don't know. Again, so, that's why we're, and it gets to be redundant, we want information in a process which we can ask questions, because what does this mean? To give me something is notifying me, but not informing me, because I can't ask questions to understand it. So, I would, I would say this, if there's four of us here, four of us could have eight different interpretations of that, at least. And so, we're stuck doing a lot of guessing, filling in blanks that, you know, in the absence of information, people make up their own. And when you have conflicting stories, or when you see, okay, this report came from this piece, and then you're looking at the report, and you say, oh, but that really is an indicator of end-of-course exams, not necessarily graduation credits. And I think one of the challenges with that report is it made, you talk about these different narratives, it made it appear as if we have absolutely incompetent guidance counselor. Because how could you get to this point, where that significant majority of your seniors are not on track to graduate, and no one knew? So, again, I don't know if that's, I don't think that that's accurate. I don't think our graduation rate has ever been that low, and don't expect it to all of a sudden become that low. So again, I think some of it is, could be, we need to get a better understanding, interpretation of what these numbers are, because those numbers don't really add up. We don't have any radical, I mean, you know, the district is gonna have some deficiency, some improvement, you hope, we hope more improvement, right? But to go from, it's kinda like a few years ago, when we went from an A in one category to an F.
Yes.
They changed some things, there were some measurement changes, right?
Yeah, pathways, they've decreased the pathways to graduation, and...
Yeah, so...
So, it's like all on our district, and I know that there's a variety of things that are...
So hopefully, at some stage, when people come to these meetings, we'll be able to have the information that gives some clarification on, on questions. So, the questions that you, that you're asking are questions that we've also asked. So, and when we get the information, we will definitely share it with the community.
Last question, I promise. So, the way to get that information would be everyone to sit at the same table. Are you guys willing to do that at this time, still?
Always.
Absolutely, yes.
We have always been willing.
Okay.
Always.
Look, we left an empty chair for them.
And as far as the safety piece goes, we were very intentional about that safety piece, and how we have to deal with that, and not deferring to the board leadership, but law enforcement leadership. They're the resident experts. And so, that was not anything that I think the board, or the district, or any individual silo could resist. I mean, when the chief calls that meeting, and based on the absolute imperative, that's, that urgency, everyone had to, and I think the same urgency needs to be around other areas, too. But again, we're, we are more than willing, open, and needing to have that information.
Maybe what we need to do then is the parents call the meeting, and see who shows up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
What time does school start?
I think there's still a couple.
What time does school start?
No, no.
Seven thirty?
It's different in different buildings.
Depends on the building.
It depends on if it's elementary school, middle school, or high school.
Well, what time do they start? Nine o'clock, seven o'clock?
I think it's, I believe it's nine for elementary, they go, they go nine to three or three-thirty.
There's early start and late starts for elementary, yeah. It's staggered.
High school's like seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty in the morning.
They have to be at school at seven-thirty? That's too damn early!
We get out at two-ten.
Then they can get out later.
They're out at two-ten.
They don't get enough sleep!
You're used to that old Lorraine High schedule than I was.
Yeah, nine o'clock!
Yeah, that, that's decades ago.
That is what you heard me say. Remember what I was saying about being late in the mornings? That's why they're late in the mornings.
Because they need to sleep later! They don't go to bed that early!
Well, everything's different now, you know, you can go shopping 24/7, right? You can bake 24/7?
And people like to sleep later! What time is the next, when is the next CEO meeting, you know?
Thursday.
Yeah, town hall's Thursday.
Thursday?
Yes.
Thursday?
Thursday.
Where we at?
County, county middle school.
Come on up, ma'am.
County middle school. Little school. My name is Summer Harvey, live on Highland Park Boulevard. I kinda wanted to piggyback off of the enrollment issue, mainly because, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is a grade, like a state grade, solely for attendance, correct?
Yes.
So why would that not be more imperative for us to get down? Because if we have the wrong enrollment numbers, then that could be making our absentee numbers look worse than they actually are. And so, if we have the right numbers, our attendance grade could possibly go up, which would get, get us one step closer to being from under House Bill 70, which is, I thought, our ultimate goal. So I would hope that that would become more of a priority, because that's the whole reason we're here, is to...
And I think that's a lot of, what I kept saying, they're not comfortable with the number yet, it's because they're working towards that, they're trying to get the number as realistic, you know, the absolute number as possible. And I do know that, I mean, that number naturally changes almost every day anyways, in a district our size, but they wanna make sure that it's accurate to the day for certain, and I, I know it is a, one of their more important pieces that they're, they're looking at, so...
So like, obviously, well, not obviously, but I have not been so involved previous years, so I don't know. Is that a number that you guys would have received much earlier in the year, previously?
Usually every, every year that we've been, and it's recently has changed, you know, but they have what they call ADM week. There was a day in October where, or a week, a week span, where they would say, "We're gonna count every student that's in school for this week," you know, and that's, that's usually our primary number, okay? But they are going away from that now. Josh says it's a week-to-week thing, okay?
So it's fluid?
Yes.
So what happens is, technology allows us to be day-to-day more accurate than in the past. In the past, we took a snapshot, you know, like you do with a snapshot. On this day, we have X number of vouchers, we'll snapshot this week, we have this number of students, we report that to the state, that becomes the baseline, and anything that's added or subtracted, that's the number it's added or subtracted from. Now what happens is, because of EMIS, which is used by all the districts in the state, there is a constant updating and reporting. So there's an EMIS officer, there's, there's, there's administrators who just do that piece. Our frustration is, again, we wanna know our real numbers moving as we go forward. We don't want, we don't need to know once you finalize it and baked it, right? So for us, that number, we need to know some regularity, especially when we're looking at trends, and, and so, what's driving us is, that's, that's where our, our money comes from. Per head, a certain amount of money, that tells you a lot about your revenue, so I absolutely need to know it for those reasons. Also, it informs us on student-teacher ratio. It informs us that if we have too many in the count of sixth graders, where you have to add sixth-grade teachers, or if you have two, you know, you have 12 fourth-grade teachers, but then that number's lower. So there are lots of reasons that impact classroom learning, that impact financial planning, that impact transportation, it impacts a whole lot. And that pupil count is one of the most important number counts that we have in a district. And so, again, we have lots of challenges. Is this because of changes in administrators who aren't familiar with systems? Is this because we don't want to talk about the depleting enrollment, that the trend that people believe is there? And so, again, when you don't answer the questions, there are more questions that people begin to spin around in their heads. And that's where we are, we're, we don't know, and, and so, we're guessing, and we don't have a certain level of trust because of our communication process. So, when you tell me it's plus 800, and we all know that there's no way that it's plus 800, and then you come back and say it's another number, and then the next number's even lower, so there's skepticism.
So this is the first year that they've done it this way, where it's a constant update, as opposed to what you spoke to previous years? Is this the first year we've done this?
Second year.
Second year.
Okay, did we have the same problems last year, then?
I, I think it's more so that this year, they're really keying in on attendance.
Well, I guess everybody's asking that, what are, what are the specific obstacles that the administration is facing with pinpointing enrollment numbers? Like, what exactly is making it so hard to get that information?
Honestly, I can't, I don't know. That, I can't speak directly to, that I, I'm not sure. I do know it's something that they're, they're trying to manage, I don't wanna say better, but making sure they're more accurate for that reason. I think in the past, looking in comparison, there always is that balance. Sure, you wanna get the most accurate number, because when it comes to attendance, like you said, that influences everything. That influences, you know, teacher-student ratio, everything that Tim said. In the same regard, though, there is that balance, that if you're pulling these students off your books, and nobody else, you know, there's, you're losing funding. So, I mean, there's, there's two sides to it, there's always that balance, and there's always been that balance in the past. I do know that they're really concentrating on the attendance piece of it, though, not only the enrollment, but the attendance, because you can't get an accurate attendance if you don't have an accurate enrollment. If you're assuming the student is your student, or the district's student, but yet he hasn't shown up every day, any day since the beginning of the year, obviously, that's an enrollment issue more than an attendance issue.
At what point do you stop?
At what point do you stop doing that, though? Like, at what point? I don't know, I just don't understand why it's so hard. It seems like it's a simple thing to do, you take the attendance, turn in the numbers, and then you turn that over to the state, or whoever it is that you report that to? Like, I'm just confused, and you said that you didn't have an answer to this, but I, again, I'm just confused as to why we're having such issues this year, reporting enrollment.
There's a lot of pieces to it, and especially when you look at the fact of, if the student isn't here, sometimes you can't just arbitrarily pull them off the books, because you've got to see where they're at. So, there should be that kind of investigation too, and in some cases, and I know it's, it's board policy to wait, you have to send a letter out, and if you don't hear back within two weeks, then you can finally pull them off the books, or pull them off the, the enrollment piece. I mean, there, there is like a set kind of process that you have to go through.
That's why we've changed our question, we've tried to take our question and make it more narrow, so we're asking now specifically about students who have enrolled out of the district.
Yes.
Because, again, you might not be able to track Johnny, who's never been here, so he's been recorded absent, but last week, Suzie was a student, and this week Suzie isn't. So, there's, yeah, and that's why we've asked that more specifically, because generally, you can ask a question and get the information, but when you can't get, now you have to take your question and pinpoint it, which is crazy.
The reason that, that, I mean, I've, I've watched, I've watched the numbers for this nine, nine, ten years, so, here's a little, every hundred students is about six-hundred-thousand dollars in, in revenue, and, and this, this school runs off of, runs off of revenue. So, I mean, if we, if we dropped eight hundred students, it'd be four-point-eight million dollars, okay? So, we would be concerned, you know, that's why, that's why I want to know, and that's why I asked the question. You may not know everything, but you know this, you know from July fifteenth until October fifteenth, you have a list of who's withdrawn. All I wanted to know, all I really want to know is, how many kids have withdrawn? On the other side of that is, you might want to say, how many kids have we gained? Because you can't just look at it one way and not, and not the other, you know? But, I, I mean, I'm just concerned, especially with some things that have happened, if we have a lot of people leaving, okay? And we, we haven't gotten that information, and that's, that's why I'm concerned.
Is there still an automated or a call at all home to students who are absent daily through the high school? I know elementary there are, but...
I don't know specifically, I don't deal with that, I would, I would think so. I know there...
I wonder if that's a tool they could use to help identify students who are not ever gonna be here?
And I'm sure there is, I mean, like I said, there's, there's multiple ways, I know they try to use. I think the bigger question is, at what point, if they're not getting an answer, at what point can you pull them off?
Is there not a clear-cut deadline through board policy, or through any administrative policies?
No, our, our deadlines on reporting have been driven by the state. That was what the ADM week was. When they change the rules, our new guidelines are reporting weekly. So, right now, there was a report that went to ODE last week, the week before, the week before, and the week before.
Do you have a list of those? Like, do you know them, the numbers?
The, what, what, here's our frustration, the number exists because it got reported someplace.
Right. That's what I'm asking you.
Yeah, but...
So, you don't have access to that?
Right, but it got reported.
Well, no, that's what I sent you guys, you guys are challenging, that's what was reported, that came right from EMIS, the, the reports I supplied you, and that actually has monthly tabs on it, so you can see month by month what was being reported.
And so, at some stage, the reconciliation of that, if, if what, if what everyone's saying is true, we're reporting a number to the state, but there's no belief that that number's accurate. Once they figure out the accurate number, now we have to deal with, okay...
I take you back.
Are we gonna owe more money, we gonna get some money back, what's gonna, yeah, it's...
Did any of you that received that information from Mr. Hill review it at all, as far as the monthly tabs that you mentioned, to know if we're increasing or decreasing with the weekly updates?
The numbers that we receive...
We only got one.
What number?
One week number?
And that number does not...
He said there was monthly tabs.
There's tabs in the spreadsheet I sent you.
Yeah, yeah, we, we only, we only got, we only, we only got one, and I, I would, I would disagree with his information.
Mr. Hill, you said the, there's monthly tabs, did you mean that it goes back to show them the weekly updates of the enrollment numbers?
There are tabs on the spreadsheet I sent out at the bottom.
Different schools, yeah.
Yeah, and it, it breaks it down by school, and the numbers on the, to far left or far right column...
It's just broken down by school, right?
Yes, just broken down by school.
But not by week or month? It has...
It's by month.
I think...
But we're only in the second month.
Yeah.
See, you have to remember things like, I mean, I mean, I'm sure they don't, nobody thinks about this, but me. Okay, we had a catastrophic event, okay? A lot of families moved here from Puerto Rico last year, okay? And...
Hundred families in one week?
Yeah, probably, I mean, I mean, there, there was a lot of people that moved, that moved into the district, and a lot of them went back, okay? And I don't know if they've been accounted for yet, you know, because I still think we're using numbers from last summer. Okay, that's, I guess that's, that's my point. And my point, when Josh tells me, Bill, I'm satisfied with this number, then I'm, I'm probably gonna be okay with it, okay? But if they come up later and the state says, you owe, you owe me five million dollars, then I'm gonna be concerned.
Something that's not so important, but I can speak to, like, knowing that information, like, numbers, information is not being set out, because the home, homecoming ticket sales were affected by that as well. They were using numbers from like last year or the year before, and there was between eighty and a hundred students that would not have been able to attend high school had there not been someone to probe and request a new evaluation for the fire code numbers. So, luckily, someone did probe that, and we got it addressed, and there was, like I said, between eighty and a hundred extra students, which is a big deal, that's a lot of kids. Who got the opportunity to make lifetime memories, who would not have if we didn't have someone probe that number, so, I mean, hopefully, we can make that a priority. Thank you for your time.
And I'd like to add too, when you come in late, we are on a block system, so it's an hour and forty-five minutes. So, the first forty-five minutes, that's the one you cannot attend. Then after that forty-five minutes, you get to go to the last hour. That is the way one student explained it to me, I, I hope he was right, but he said that is the way the system works. So, you miss forty-five minutes regardless, and then you get to go to the next hour, so you don't become a disruptive part of the school system.
I'll have one more thing. Josh, I'd like to put this on your, on your plate. So, I did get some calls from Southview Middle School. If you remember, a couple of years back, we had a problem with dirty water, or rusted water, when we had the valves that were rusted out, and we had to have those replaced. I guess that has resurfaced, and I did get some complaint calls of yellow water, and the drinking water, and a raw sewage smell, and I'm not sure if that has anything to do with the knocking down of Southview that's affecting those lines over there, but if you can get that to Mr. Hawks and have him take a look at the yellow drinking water and the raw sewage smell throughout the middle school, Southview, thank you.
And then also, just to add to your, to your plate, we'd been informed through various sources that there was, I don't know if it was a principal at Southview Middle School who's on leave, and I know it's a personality issue, we may need to go into a dedicated session, but can you give us some update on the status of that? Is it administrative paid leave, unpaid leave, what the nature of it is? Not for public discourse, but just so that we have a little bit more understanding of what's happening with all that. Because I think it would have been a fairly new principal, because they get a lot of moving around and stuff, so, and a few parents expressed that. I was kind of like, I don't know who's the principal, whether they're there or not, but it brings questions to mind, especially in terms of how we are logistically, if we're paying for someone who's on leave and paying for someone who's subbing in, that presents a question. Anything else for the good of the order? May we have a motion to dismiss?
Some moves.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV 20 WLCS.